September twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting of the North Gibson School Corporation. It is the intent of the North Gibson School Board and Administration to conduct an informal, open meeting concerning the business of education in our school corporation. We have two designated times established during the regular board session for patron's statements. The first is established at the beginning of the meeting for patron's statements specific to agenda items. The second opportunity for patron's statements is established at the end of the meeting agenda and is for any patron's statements. School patrons who wish to address the board may do so during these agenda times designated to hear patrons' concerns. We will not discuss, excuse me, in open sessions, any individual school student or school employee and/or descriptions of such people which leave little doubt as to the identity of these people. Dr. Goggins, Superintendent Schools, and myself will be available after the meeting to discuss any concerns expressed by patrons. At this time, I'd ask everyone, please stand and join us in the presence of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, first item on the agenda then is the patron's statements on agenda items. Patrons who wish to address the board in regard to specific agenda items may do so during this time. Comments are limited to specific agenda items only. Patrons wishing to address the board on items that are not specific to items on this evening's agenda may do so during the patron's statement section designated at the end of the school board meeting. We will not discuss in open session any individual school student or school employee and/or descriptions of such people which leave little doubt as to the identity of these people. Dr. Goggins, Superintendent Schools, and myself will be available after the meeting to discuss any concerns expressed by patrons. Per board policy, we can, we can limit the comments to three minutes if time becomes an issue. Thank you. So, any patrons that would like to address the board concerning the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of our board minutes. Minutes of the August twenty-first, twenty, twenty-twenty-three regular session and the nine-eleven twenty-twenty-three special session, which was a budget hearing, those minutes have been presented to the board and at this time will accept the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve the minutes from our August twenty-first and September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three board meetings.
We have a second? Second, Ms. Bingham? Any discussion of these board minutes? Mr. Oyes? Danny, okay? Okay. Any other discussion for board minutes? Hearing that, we'll call for a vote, Mr. Brownhouse.
Online voting is now open. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is purchases. We need to consider claim check number six zero six zero three through six zero seven eight nine and voucher number six three four one eight through six three six nine zero, including claims and payroll deductions. And that amounts to one million, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars, four thousand and thirty-nine dollars. Let me start over again. One million, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, twenty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. So, the board has been provided with the vouchers and accounts. Is there a motion to approve? So, okay. Mr. Severs, we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Oyes? Any discussion? Hearing that, Mr. Brownhouse, we'll call for a vote.
All right, online voting is open. Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, item six, excuse me, item seven is personnel, resignations, retirements, employee actions, FMLA, et cetera. Dr. Goggins?
Thank you, Mr. Mokox. We'll start with resignations, leaves, and end of employment. We have retirement of Kevin Witten, as middle school social studies teacher effective October seventeenth of twenty-three. Resignation of Sadie Adams, special education assistant, effective immediately. Resignation of Tanisha Adams, intermediate school instructional assistant, effective September twenty-second. Resignation of Haley Mann, high school English teacher, effective October twelfth. Resignation of Wendy Phelps, intermediate school instructional assistant, effective August twenty-fifth. Resignation, end of employment for Mr. Jim Tucker, James Tucker, school resource officer, effective September nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Resignation of Tina Handis, primary school nurse, effective October sixth. And a leave request for Tori Sartori, middle school special education assistant, beginning sometime the week of September seventh through the twenty-second. Moving on to new hires, transfers, or changes of employment, we have new hire Diana Potts as intermediate school special education assistant, starting September fifth. New hire Miranda McCowen as instructional assistant at the intermediate school, effective September twenty-fifth. New hire Bailey Moore, middle school special education assistant, effective September eighth. New hire Jessica Hopper, middle school special education teacher. Be a prorated salary for this school year because she will be starting on October seventeenth. New hire Jason Cullum as school resource officer with an effective date of November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and a prorated salary because of that start date. New hire Mary Agnew, intermediate school special education assistant, as part-time, five hours per day. Long-term sub Megan Ross, October seventeenth through December of twenty-three. SLP, part-time contracted service with Linda Patterson as speech-language pathologist assistant. And we have a change of assignment transfer, Arana Lynn Webber, as primary school, now self-contained teacher. Judy Gill was a transfer to special education kindergarten teacher. We have coach Jimmy Hartsfield, fifth grade girls' basketball. Coach James Price, high school assistant football coach to a full stipend. New hire Emily Cleaving, speech-language pathologist assistant, start date to be determined. Coach Mary Williams as intermediate school volunteer archery coach. And coach Earl Griswold, intermediate school volunteer archery coach. We also have items under FMLA leave, I won't read out loud because of protected information. It would be my recommendation this evening that those items under employment be approved.
Thank you, Dr. Goggins. Hearing, Dr. Evans. Do we have a motion to approve? Ms. Bingham, we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Oyes? Any discussion? Hearing that, Mr. Brownhouse, we'll call for a vote.
Online voting is now open. Motion carries unanimously.
To that agenda item, that we do still have a high school English physician, although they did some interviewing. And with the retirement at the middle school with Mr. Witten, we also are seeking a social studies teacher. So, have some prospects on both, but want to encourage anyone out there, the community or beyond, that is looking for a teaching physician, either of those positions, to reach out and talk to Mr. Brownhouse, or to Mrs. Stow, or Mr. Wagner about those job opportunities.
Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public hearing for additional appropriations. Dr. Goggins?
Yes, so I am asking the board to approve a resolution for additional appropriation in the education fund. So, every year when we do our budget, we ask for specific appropriation based off of what we think and estimated expenditures as well as revenue. We underappropriated what we needed, but our revenue was higher than what we appropriated. So, with these increases that will be coming soon, which is one of our agenda items to do a public hearing for tentative agreement, to ensure that we have enough appropriation to pay back pay as well as implement increases from now to the end of the calendar year, we want to request an additional appropriation of the education fund just to ensure that we have enough appropriations to do that. We certainly have enough cash. Our revenue is far above what we appropriate. We do that intentionally. And we may have enough appropriations to not even use this appropriation requesting, and if that's the case, that's great. But I want to be sure that we do have enough appropriation to access our cash to make our back payment of the raises and be able to do that without having any issues. So, that's what this is. It's a, it's a hearing with the subsequent request for approval of the board to approve additional three hundred thousand dollar appropriation into the education fund for personnel services and to, which will be used for paying employees with these increases. So, we, we always appropriate based off of what our current status is with employment, pay and salary, but when those increases come, you don't know if your appropriations is going to be enough. So, certainly want to know that it's going to be enough, and this will more than put us in a position to be able to pay out those increases.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Goggins. Hearing Dr. Goggins' recommendation, do we have a motion? Motion for Ms. Bingham, we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Severs? Any discussion? Mr. Oyes?
I think I'm correct in saying that we asked for an additional appropriation.
Correct. Yes. If we need it, it, the appro, the appropriation will be there. We cannot appropriate, we will not get approved for an appropriation that we can't prove we have the cash to pay. We have a, an appropriate, healthy balance of cash in our education fund. And we're just, I'm just requesting appropriations to be able to spend three hundred thousand dollars more than we originally were appropriated when we did the budget this time last year.
And if we don't need it, if we'll not get it approved.
That's just appropriation that we didn't use. That means that that amount of cash will stay there. We won't spend that appropriation.
I know some, some, thank you, because you asked for an additional appropriation, you're going to use it or you're going to put it back.
Right. Appropriation is the permission to spend the cash that you have. So, you cannot appropriate and get approved to spend more appropriation than you actually have. This doesn't even come close to appropriating all the cash we have on hand in the education fund.
Any more discussion? Hearing that, Mr. Brownhouse, we'll call for a vote.
Online voting is now open. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the adoption of all twenty-twenty-four budgets, capital project plans, bus replacement plans, education to operations transfer statement, and budget resolutions. Mr. Goggins?
So, we're at the point where we've had budget development by myself and Mindy Brynes and Dr. Harmon, our budget consultant. We've had a public hearing on the budget. We, actually, we started with permission to advertise where I talked about the budget. We had a public hearing, and now we're at the point of approving for Mindy and myself to submit the budget to the Department of Local Government Finance, which they will then do their work to establish our budget, establish the appropriate tax rate based on RSS values, and send us our seventeen eighty-two, which is our budget statement that says this is the money we'll be receiving, and these are the appropriations you have approved to spend. So, with that, the board has to approve all items of the budget this evening, including our capital projects plan, bus replacement plan, the budget itself, resolution for the twenty-twenty-four budget transfer, rainy day transfer resolution, resolution authorizing tax anticipation warrants for twenty-twenty-four, resolution for the twenty-twenty-four budget hearing, which is the entire budget that you review, that you will sign, resolutions to transfer amounts from education fund to operation fund, and the twenty-twenty-four resolutions for appropriations and tax rates. So, all of those are standard resolutions and approvals that you do each year. So, I'm just asking that you approve those this evening, and we will move forward with submitting our budget.
Thank you, Dr. Goggins. Hearing Dr. Goggins' recommendations, is there a motion for the board?
Read through all of them. I was a little disappointed. Capital projects plan didn't have all my favorite things, but I do think that it has all that we can accomplish within reason with the dollars that we've been allocated by our community, and it's a good plan and a good budget. So, I make a motion that we adopt that twenty-twenty-four budget, capital projects plan, bus replacement plan, and approve budget-related resolutions.
Thank you. Hearing, we have a motion, do we have a second? Second? No, no, just a second, hold on, just, so we have a second, Mr. Severs? All right, now, discussion?
Maybe I'm a little confused, I don't know, but we missed through three hundred thousand dollars to the, to the education fund.
Appropriations, not new money.
Well, then here it says amounts of transfer of the education fund to operation funds.
Right. We are allowed, so when the state took over from having a general fund that had property tax dollars to making an education fund fully funded by the state to us, no more property taxes, they said, they, only these specific people who are instructional within the classroom and within the school can be paid from education, and these people who previously were paid from general fund to education fund have to move to operations. So, they gave districts the opportunity to transfer fifteen percent of education dollars, up to fifteen percent, to operations. We didn't do the full fifteen percent that we could have, but we did do around a twelve percent tran, transfer. So, that is continuing a transfer of education into operations to continue covering those costs that no longer can be in education that previously were funded in education. So, we couldn't raise more dollars in operations to pay for those people when they moved from education to operation. You just lost that, that money. So, those two things aren't connected. The additional appropriation that we're requesting is to be able to spend that in the twenty-three budget, not the twenty-four budget. What you're approving here is the twenty-four calendar year budget. So, you're looking at two different items. So, we asked for an education appropriation of, for twenty-four of fourteen million, four hundred thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars. Last year, this current year, twenty-three, we asked for an appropriation of thirteen million, four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So, nearly one million dollars less. So, with the increases, some of those increases are falling in twenty-three because the school year started in August, so our first pay was the last pay in August. So, I need that additional appropriation potentially to pay for raises that partially occur in twenty-three, and in twenty-four, we're asking for more appropriation to cover the rest of those increases that fall in twenty-four, plus what we think might be an increase in the second half of twenty-four. But we don't know what those new dollars are, so we may have to ask for another. It's a shot in the dark in October to guess how much we're going to need and spend for the whole twenty-four calendar year. Did that answer your question?
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Goggins, and Ms. Bingham. Any other discussion? Hearing that, Mr. Brownhouse, we'll call for a vote.
Online voting is open. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is updated board policies, second reading. Dr. Goggins?
It's a second reading for the policies listed for update. Did not receive any additional input or information from board members or community members about any of these special updates. Not to get you too excited about the next update, but they did say it's probably coming out in October or November. So, approving this second reading and adoption keeps us ahead of having another group come in before we get these approved. So, again, no, no additional information or input was provided, so it would be my recommendation this evening that we adopt this special update, the policies listed, and then we will send that on to Miola for adding and updating our policies, our handbook, and then we'll have another round coming in October, November.
Thank you, Dr. Goggins. This is our second reading, so the board's had ample time to review all the policy updates. So, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve the second reading and adopt these updated policies to our board policy.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, we have a second? Second, Ms. Bingham? Any discussion? Hearing that, Mr. Brownhouse, we'll call for a vote.
Online voting is now open. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item eleven on our agenda, public hearing on teacher contract. Dr. Goggins?
Yeah, so, before we open the floor for any public comment, I'll just go through the changes to the teacher's contract and the tentative agreement that's been ratified by the teachers with overwhelming support. So, for the twenty-three, twenty-four tentative agreement, we'd be putting four percent of current teacher salaries into the compensation model for additional compensation. Additionally, academic need payments, academic need is a teacher retention catch-up increase to relieve the historic salary compression and retain teachers hired prior to July one, two thousand fifteen, which is group one, and those hired between July one, two thousand fifteen, and June thirty, two thousand eighteen, which is group two. By increasing these teacher salaries up to an additional one thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars in comparison to the increase in the new teacher's minimum salary, which the new teacher's minimum salary in this contract will go from forty thousand to forty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Additionally, we will be making adjustments to, we are making adjustments to the hiring schedule that moves the bachelor's ranges to what was the bachelor's plus fifteen ranges and eliminating a bachelor's plus fifteen and moving the master's ranges of our hiring schedule to the master's plus fifteen hiring ranges and eliminating the master's plus fifteen moving forward. So, it moves the ranges up to give us a little more flexibility to get teachers in a competitive salary. Also, we'll be increasing the speech-language pathologist stipend to one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars, which is the same as non-self-contained special education teachers. We will be adding some contract language, which will be regarding bereavement leave. Be adding three days of bereavement leave at the time of occurrence if an employer or spouse suffers a pregnancy loss or failed fertility treatment, and that will be provided upon medical certification. We are holding health, health premiums steady, will not be increasing any premiums. And then we will be adding the program through Brown and Brown, our insurance advisors, called Centers of Excellence for orthopedic procedures as well as heart procedures. The Orthopedic Center of Excellence, which is on here for your approval, is a separate agenda item, is through Hendrix Regional Health, which is in Danville, just south of the, Danville-Avon area. And the Orthopedic Center of Excellence is the Ascension St. Vincent Heart Hospital in Carmel. Both of those will run outside of our health insurance, but at a, at high-quality facilities that give our employees an option if they would like to go there versus using health insurance to another provider of no cost out of pocket for deductibles for the procedures and so, and incentives for going there that provide incentive into an HSA payment. And in return, you're going to a high-quality, some of the best care for both the state of Indiana, and doing that at a more affordable rate for the employee as well as the school district. So, we'll be adding those to our, our plan. And that is the overall in, changes in our tentative agreement. So, at this time, Mr. Mokox, I'd say you can open the floor for any public comment, and then if there are none, or once that is complete, the board, my recommendation would be for the board to close the public hearing, and then our next ratification of the board of this agreement, I believe we're setting next Wednesday at four-thirty, will be a special session to do that, so.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Goggins. Do we have any, any patrons that would like to address the board concerning the, for public content, comment on the master-teacher's contract that Dr. Goggins has explained to us? Hearing and seeing none, I would then ask for a motion to close the public hearing on the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four teacher contract tentative agreement, as recommended by Dr. Goggins. Mr. Oyes, have a second? Mr. Severs? Thank you. Mr. Brownhouse, any further discussion from the board before a call for a vote? Okay, Mr. Brownhouse?
Online voting is open. Motion carries unanimously.
Ratification, meeting, special session will be Tuesday at four-thirty, now Wednesday, next Tuesday.
Thank you. For, for that correction. First time.
And, that's our, that's brandy.
All right. Item fourteen on the agenda, the Health Insurance Center of Excellence Service Agreement. Dr. Goggins?
Yeah, I just gave some information about that. The, to be a part of these programs, which are at no cost to us or our employees as part of our health offerings, we have to sign service agreements with Brown and Brown, who is a coordinator of those plans, and also it's in agreement with those hospitals for those services if our employees choose to go there. So, in order for us to move forward with that, effective really October one, at our renewal time, which is just next week, we need to approve these agreements, and I felt like it was appropriate for the board to approve those, and then I will sign them and get them submitted tomorrow. So, if you have any questions about the Center of Excellence, I certainly can So if you have any questions about the Center of Excellence, I certainly can explain that further. I know it's kind of a new concept for us, but it's certainly not new. One of the, the heart is new as of October first for Brown and Brown to offer, but there are Centers of Excellence across the country. The Orthopedic has been in service for two years and had nearly three hundred procedures completed, and there are numerous school districts, cities, towns, municipalities that are part of Brown and Brown's clients that are participating in these Centers of Excellence for employee savings and quality care as well as employer.
I would ask, ask our attorney if he'd had a chance to review the contract.
I've renewed it. It's quoted by Dr. Goggins about it, and I think it really only provides benefits to the school district and its employees, and it's a huge opportunity, so my recommendation would be to approve it as well.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Hearing, Dr. Goggins and our distinguished attorneys' comments. He just did. Does the board have any comments regarding the health contract?
Appreciate Dr. Goggins and the administration working to try to bring down healthcare costs for the corporation and for our employees and to prioritize their access to our quality services, and so I think that these agreements are in the best interest of us and our employees, and so I'd make a motion to approve those service agreements.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. We have a second. Second, Ms. Bingham. Any further discussion? Hearing done, Mr. Brownhouse will call for a vote.
Online voting is now open. Motion carries unanimously.
Next item thirteen on our agenda is approval of the bid for the pre-K playground. Dr. Goggins?
As you recall, we received funding from the Toyota Driving Possibilities Grant to fund a new playground. That funding was nine hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars for a pre-K playground. State-of-the-art pre-K playground, also be used by kindergarten, I'm assuming, but it would be appropriate for that age, pre-K kindergarten. So we have been doing plan specification development. We ran into some areas that weren't surveyed previously in work at the primary school that we need to get surveyed, that delayed us a little bit. So we went out to bid about four weeks ago. Bids were due on Friday. We only have one bidder, art construction, which makes sense because they're here right now doing work from the track to the four-T precision machining expansion, and now if you award them the work, the primary school playground. So bids came in with a base bid amount of six hundred and eighty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. Alternate one, which is, what are the alternates? Alternate one is to provide price-to-install turf playground surface instead of the port of place, kind of a spongy surface, which we certainly want to do. It's a more durable, less expensive to replace in the future item. And that alternate, number one, was fifty-nine thousand seven hundred dollar addition. Alternate two was a twenty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollar addition, which was to provide hard-surfers playground and concrete instead of asphalt, which will certainly last longer and require less long-term maintenance. And then alternate number three was to provide and install additional sidewalk and concrete at sixty-eight thousand dollars. And alternate four was to provide additional fencing along the softball area to enclose the softball field as there'll be more traffic up there, both for softball and playground purposes. So total bid came in at a total of eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. So that's well below our budget, which will allow us to incur most, if not all, of our soft costs for architect fees, engineering fees, and construction management fees. So certainly we're pleased. That, that amount also has a small contingency in case they find something that needs to be addressed, but certainly budget came in, and it's always concerning, especially when they have one bidder, but we were pleased that they came in lower than expected. So it'd be my recommendation that the board approve this evening that base bid as well as all four alternates for a total amount of eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, and then construction will be starting pretty quickly, so. It'll all be used. With, with fees, we're already pretty close to that nine hundred, and we still have some fees that we will incur with the design and implementation from, from architect and engineer. So I, I don't anticipate that we'd be much money left there. If there is, then we'll have to ask permission from Toyota to spend that differently and maybe buy some more ride-on toys and things that can go out on that playground.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Goggins, for, on your recommendation. Hearing then, do we have a motion to approve?
I would make the motion to approve art construction for the base bid and alternates one, two, three, and four, totally eight hundred and fifty-eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Do we have a second? Mr. Severs, second. Any further discussion?
It does remind me of a conversation I had sitting at the table with Bryce a few years ago on the PTO, and our PTO had done a good job of raising some money, and the school was expanding the, and improving the primary school, and so our PTO thought, we're going to help out, you know? You guys are going to have a new playground over there? You know, maybe we can get some of that equipment, and then we started looking at equipment prices, and we said, eh, maybe we can help out somewhere else. But it's really an awesome opportunity to see this enhancement to our primary school, and campus continues to grow and improve.
Yes, it is. And I'm excited about the opportunity to test out the, this turf playground. I think that's something down the road. If it works out well, as we start to do renovations at other playgrounds, it's something we can consider. It's a safer surface. It doesn't require as much maintenance and replacing with mulch, and it's a little more expensive upfront, but the long-term return and replacement is much cheaper than the port of place. But it'll be our test location. We've had several school districts we've talked to that have put it in place recently, and they're loving it, fully ADA accessible, tricycles can easily ride on them, and they're all saying we won't do it any other way. So it'll be a good, when it's not our money, it's our money now, but it's a good chance to try something new. So I'm excited about that. I know Bryce is excited to have it as well.
Bryce, would you like a big comment?
I was talking about the driving possibilities grant that's helped to build our pre-K, and this opportunity to have a nice pre-K slash kindergarten playground will help. I know that others may be a little jealous, the first secretary might be trying to fight with the other, but we'll work with it.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, and no other comments from the board? Mr. Brownhouse will call for a vote.
Online voting is open. Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item fourteen on the agenda is the Positive Action Curriculum. And we're going to give Dr. Goggins a rest and let Mr. Brownhouse have the speaker for him there.
A well-served rest. So we've actually had a group of people working on adopting a curriculum like this for quite some time. As part of our work with EES, part of our three-year plan, one of the items was to look for and adopt a behavior and characterability curriculum such as this. So we had a committee look at this Positive Action Curriculum over the summer and last spring, and they felt like that was a good option for our students in K through five. Positive Action is a school-based behavior and characterability curriculum for students. It runs from K through eight. We're looking at using it initially in K through five, but its goals are to increase positive student behaviors and improve overall school climate. So Positive Action focuses on the same core principles at all grade levels, so students are hearing the same things at each grade level. Those, those concepts or core principles are self-concept, and then positive actions for body and mind, managing yourself responsibly, treating others the way you would like to be treated, telling yourself the truth, and then improving yourself continually. So those are the six core principles that the lessons in this curriculum look to help our students understand and, and build on and learn about in each year. So the important thing about this is the curriculum would give all our teachers and students a common language in which to talk about these important concepts, but as well provide our teachers with materials and then training in how to effectively teach these concepts and skills. So one of the things we're getting with this is we're getting a nice mix of analog materials. So we're getting some big boxes full of books and lesson plans and things like that. These lessons are typically around fifteen to twenty minutes, and they're, one of the things we liked about this was that presented in a very user-friendly format. So we felt like with all the things that are on our teachers' plate, what we liked, one of the things we liked about this curriculum was that it was very user-friendly and something our teachers could kind of just take with a little bit of training and put to use. So part of our review process, there are actually several rating agencies for curriculums like this, so I included some of those in your, your board packets, but it's no surprise this curriculum received very positive ratings from all of the three rated institutes we looked at, and we think that this will be a great help for our students. We do see always, we have students who come in with a high level of trauma, and we see a lot of difficult behaviors, but this curriculum should provide all of our staff with a cohesive, consistent way to be proactively building positive behaviors and to counteract some of those negative behaviors we're seeing with students. So we think this will be a great curriculum. We're excited about being able to put it into place. We're going to take our time and do it right, make sure our teachers are trained, and we have support for them, but I think this is going to be a, a great thing for our students, and I recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Brownhouse. Very positive, appears to me very positive approach to, to the self-content, self-concepts, helping develop self-concepts for our students. Any comments, questions from the board? Hearing then, assuming it's the superintendent's recommendation that we approve, okay? So hearing superintendent's recommendations, do we have a motion? Mr. Severs, have a second. Ms. Bingham, second. Any, any further discussion? Hearing done, Mr. Brownhouse will call for a vote.
Online voting is now open. Motion carries unanimously.
One question from Mr. Brownhouse. Would you say it'll be a gradual implementation? Like by second semester, would we have this in place, or do you expect sooner or later?
Yeah, we would hope to, I think, begin putting it into place as soon as we're able. We'll, we'll order the curriculum, and it'll take a few weeks for that to come in, but there's some training we can do with staff. We have a plan for a current staff member who has some interest in working as sort of a coach for our teachers. We've talked with her about that a little bit, so our next steps would be to meet with Mr. Chamberlain and Mr. Abbey, and that's staff member, and kind of talk a little bit more about some of our next steps as far as when do we want to do some trainings, you know, how do we want to start rolling this out? But we want to make sure we do it, do it right. But I would imagine that we'll be able to get some of these things started and maybe test some of them out before the end of the first semester, but we'd hope to have, have it rolling for the most part in the second semester.
Thank you. Item fifteen on the agenda, school improvement plans. Okay, I'm going to throw that to Noah, but it's always interesting to read the school improvement plans, see how, how we're standing up against the state in, in the IRE and math area, so I find it very interesting, but go ahead, Noah.
Well, every year we are required to submit these plans to the state, and before we have to do that, they, they need to be approved by the board, so I know that our, our teams have done a lot of work on these plans and getting them ready for you to see. And of course, you can see our principals here, here tonight, if you have any questions for them on anything that's in any of the plans. So I would open up to the board, if you do have any questions about any individual pieces of the school improvement plans, our administrators are here to answer your questions.
Any questions from the board? I have one or two comments. Again, in reading through them, I was very impressed with the amount of detail and work obviously that's went into them. Couple of things that, I know that several, and I'll talk about the high school and the middle school plans first, but I, I noticed that there was a lot of discussion about the quality, the diversity within our school corporations. I know that at the high school level, we, we do some things as far as taking some of our minority students out to job fairs, I think the, oh, I had it listed here somewhere, the Indiana Latino Institute Education Summit? I didn't know if we can incorporate that into our narrative so that as, as people read that, they see that we're doing those, those things also. Okay. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, I know first, first, I think first or fourth grade, we take students out to Lisle Station to, to look at Lisle Station Museum and, and part of the curriculum of the Indiana history piece of it through the curriculum. I didn't know if we could have that listed also in, in our, in our plans to just to highlight those activities that we're doing, just to emphasize the, the equity and the diversity aspect of, of our education. Okay. All right, thank you. That was my two comments, Mr. Brownhouse. The board hasn't had any other thoughts in reading through the, the plans, but again, I appreciate your effort and the time that you put into them, and I think we're making great steps in the right direction as far as our, our test scores, and so just continue, you know, hopefully we'll continue to improve as we go forward. So we need a, a motion to approve. Anyone?
I'd make a motion to approve these school improvement plans for all our existing schools in the coming year, and show the board's appreciation for our administrators at all the school levels for all their hard work on this.
Thanks, Mr. Williams. Have a motion, be a second. Second, Mr. Rice. Any further discussion? Hearing done, Mr. Brownhouse will call for a vote.
Online voting is now open. My voting is now open. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item sixteen, out-of-state field trip. Dr. Goggins?
We have an out-of-state field trip request for the choir, high school choir, twenty students, three chaperones, to go to Murray, Kentucky on November fifth. Fifth and sixth, again, sorry, I was going to tell if I was saying June of twenty-three or, so November fifth and sixth of twenty, twenty-three. Be my recommendation, this is an annual trip that Mr. Brazel takes the high school choir to. It's a good opportunity for them to go and perform with other honors choir students from the region, so it'd be my recommendation to the board to approve that out-of-state field trip.
Thank you, Dr. Goggins. Hearing Dr. Goggins' recommendation, do we have a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip? Ms. Bingham has a motion, she has a second. Second, Mr. Severs, any further discussion? Hearing done, Mr. Bellhaus will call for a vote.
My voting is open. Motion carries unanimously.
Item seventeen on the agenda is approval facilities use application. Next step, dance facility use agreement. Mr. Bellhaus?
Yep, so this is an organization that's outside of our county, so, but does serve some of our students, but according to our policy, I would need more approval before approving this application, but this is something we've done for the past several years, and as it does benefit some of our students, definitely, definitely recommend approval.
It says, the description says high school, but it's middle school, I don't remember the high school. Just wanted to point that out.
Okay, thank you. So we have a recommendation to approve, lead a motion. Mr. Severs, makes a motion, have a second?
Second.
Mr. Eyes, the second? Any further discussion?
I, I think they've used our facilities over the last three years at least, and they've been respectful in their use of our facilities and not caused any problems, so I'd be glad to have them back on campus.
All right. Hearing nothing else, Mr. Bellhaus will call for a vote.
My voting is now open. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item eighteen, oh, excuse me, yeah, item eighteen on the agenda is ECA fiscal year-end reports. Dr. Goggins?
We are required to provide the board with an accounting of the fiscal year-end balances and fund report for each extracurricular account from each school. So you have those in your board packets, just quick information. Each of the schools have healthy yet appropriate ECA accounts that are in financial crisis. They all are operating as they should. We currently are in the middle of an actual ECA audit that we use an independent auditor for, just to audit those accounts every two years because State Board accounts no longer does an audit of those. So that is just about to wrap up, and we'll have that information back, and I certainly will provide that to you as well, but as of right now, that's going, that's going well, no issues. So it'd be my recommendation that the board approve and accept the ECA fiscal year-end reports, which is a requirement of Indiana COVID.
Thank you, Dr. Goggins. Hearing Dr. Goggins' recommendation to approve the ECA fiscal year-end reports, do we have a motion? Mr. Eyes, have a second? Second, Ms. Bingham? Any further discussion? Hearing done, Mr. Bellhaus will call for a vote.
My voting is now open. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item nineteen on the agenda, not that we didn't have quite a few items already. Dr. Goggins, you have something else for us?
Just a couple of date reminders. So again, we're going to have a special session on Tuesday of next week, the third, to potentially ratify, which I'm sure will be a positive outcome, the teachers' agreement and to approve wage increases for all other employees. And then we have a regular board session on Tuesday, October seventeenth, because October sixteenth is fall break. One thing we do need to review is our board meeting for November is scheduled for November thirteenth. However, I believe that is our regional ISBA meeting that the board typically likes to attend, so we could move that meeting. I know we had some preliminary discussion about maybe moving that meeting up a week or back a week, but have we had any consensus on when we'd like to hold that November meeting? Have we officially done that? No, we moved it to the thirteenth instead of it being on the twentieth. Sorry. So, so our November meeting will be the thirteenth instead of what would be the third Monday, the twentieth. Okay. Sorry, I confused everyone there. So our regular meeting for November will be a week earlier on November thirteenth, and then our last meeting of the calendar year will be December eighteenth. So just wanted to give those reminders to everyone. Those are the meetings we have remaining unless something else comes up that we have to meet for, but I don't anticipate that, but I did not have anything else under our table.
Okay. So hearing that, we'll move on to item twenty on the agenda. Mr. Bellhaus, Assistant Superintendent?
I just have one, one thing. As a district, we're always working to improve the safety of all of our schools. One aspect of school safety that's always, always presents a challenge due to the potential gravity of the situations, our student threats or threatening behaviors. And earlier this month, our administrative team had a chance to meet with Dr. Melissa Reeves to learn more about a framework for behavior threat assessment and management, which we shortened the acronym BTAM, BTAM. So this was a, I think, a highly engaging, highly informative training session that we had. BTAM is a safety assessment that's based on extensive research, some of which is done by the Secret Service, and it's a guide, help to guide school staff through collection and analysis of multiple sources regarding any kind of potential threat. So the training provided our, our team with a lot of specific tools to help with everything from an eight-step action plan, program implementation checklists, a screening tool that our, our building leadership teams can use in the case of a threat or threatening behavior, and an assessment, a detailed assessment if the screening tool shows us that we need to do some more work. So I think I've shared this before, but one of my favorite quotes by a guy named James Clear is, "We don't rise to the level of our goals, we fall to the level of our systems." And so this is something we don't deal with on an everyday basis, but it is something that schools deal with, and because of the, the gravity of these situations, we grapple with it quite a bit. And this behavior threat assessment management system represents a systematic approach. So it's building a system for assessing threats and threatening behaviors, and then building in pieces to manage those things more effectively. And it should give us a more consistent, thorough approach to how we handle those kinds of incidents, and I think another thing, piece that we saw was it's going to ensure that the interventions that we put in place for our students are more effective. And then finally, I felt, and our administrators, I don't know if they would agree with me, but having the training and knowledge that we got a couple of weeks ago is going to make us, give us an extra level of confidence in making these decisions, which they're just often difficult due to the nature of them. So excited about what we all learned and being able to put that into practice. Our next steps are going to be to look at the, the system that we got and look at, you know, the finer details of how do we work that into what our corporation does, but very excited, I think this will make our students, our buildings, a lot safer, and it's going to make everyone feel a lot safer as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bellhaus. The, Mr. McConnell isn't here today, so do we have a report for him or anything, Dr. Goggins?
I do not. He is taking a long weekend, missing vacation to spend time camping with his family, so certainly things are moving along well from a facilities perspective and slowing down a little bit with the mowing, although not completely, and they are starting to prepare facilities, looking forward to colder weather coming. We finally have the chiller that we've been waiting on for a year and a half that we purchased and been paying on as parts came in, it's completely here. So as soon as the weather turns from being in chiller mode in this building, that chiller will be decommissioned while we're in heating mode, likely sometime starting in November, later in November, and then I'll put that back to the new chiller, which is definitely needed, we've been limping that along for a year and a half, waiting on this to come in, so other than that, I don't think there's a whole lot going on, other than the track, finishing the track. The track will be striped, tentatively planned to be striped next week, take about two days. We don't know the arrival day yet, but that is the tentative week of striping, and then that project will be completed. And the expansion at the high school is moving along, they're pouring footers and be coming up out of the ground soon with that construction, so everything with our projects are progressing.
Okay, thank you for that update. I'm sure Mr. McConnell will appreciate that. Follow, next item on the agenda is patron statements. School patrons who wish to address the board may do so at this time. We will not discuss in an open session any individual school student or school employee and/or description of such people, which leave little down as to the identity of those people. Dr. Goggins, superintendent of schools on the staff will be available after the meeting to discuss any concerns expressed by patrons. So do we have any patrons that would like to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to board member statements. Anyone from the board with the board have any statements to make this evening?
I had the opportunity yesterday to talk to the CEO of our program for that county. There's several young people, I have two young adults there. I think it's, they interact together, they're on the way, on the inter, so again, I think anything we can do to help that program, we should contribute. It's, it's, it's slowly been started, but it's, eventually it will be done. I just appreciate you.
Well, thank you for representing North Gibson there, Mr. Eyes.
And I don't think the board's going to commend themselves, but I'm going to do it. This entire board attended the ISBA Superintendent's Association Fall Conference, and they were away from their personal and professional work and families for Sunday evening, Monday and Tuesday, and to have that commitment where the whole board went up to Indianapolis is certainly commendable, shows their dedication to growing their roles as school board members and their professional practices as school board members, the betterment of our school district, and I talked with a lot of superintendents, and none of them said they had all their board members there. Most of them were, yeah, there's one here, or there's none here, or there's a couple, but we were one hundred percent attendance, including Mr. Moon, who was there as well, and I think that's very commendable, so I wanted to share my appreciation of the board and want the public to understand the commitment that you all are putting forward beyond what is expected to serve the school district.
Well, if we're giving accolades, I'd like to give you a little accolade here, Dr. Goggins, because you were a part of a breakout session representing the four-team program, and North Gibson was recognized as being a key figure with Toyota in that breakout session, so I appreciate your efforts and participation and support also.
You're welcome. It was a good session, and a lot of people in there, so.
Yes, we did, yes, we did. And well, just going forward, I thought that the keynote speakers both evenings, or both mornings, I guess I should say, had some good, good points to bring forward, not that you might not necessarily have agreed with everything that they were saying, but there was food for thought, so, and the sessions I attended also were very thought-provoking, so it was good for education, and I want to recognize ISBA for the effort that they put forth in bringing over nine hundred school board members and sponsors to, to Indianapolis for the two-day event. So I have, anybody else? Hearing done, the next item on the agenda, going ones, going tw- adjournment? Mr. Severs, second, Mr. Eyes, call for the vote, Mr. Bellhaus.
My voting is now open. Motion carries unanimously.
We are adjourned, and I want to thank our administrative staff for being here this evening.